I'll now call to order the Tuesday, May the first, meeting of the Iowa County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I ask you to please bow your heads and observe a moment of silent prayer At this time, we'll say the pledge of allegiance, and we have a special guest who Commissioner McNeely will introduce to lead us in the pledge.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If William Clontz, if you'd come forward, he's with Troop 609, Scott and Angela Clontz, his mom and dad are here with us tonight, and we're glad to have you lead us in our pledge.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, and to the government for which it stands, one nation, founded by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, William, and thank you, Scott and Angela. At this time, Ms. Jones, would you please review adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We will be pulling item 8.1 under administrative items. That will be brought up at a later date for review. And then we do have the addition under new business to add general government task force items that Commissioner Haupt will cover.
Any further adjustments from the board? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted?
So moved.
Motion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We have no appointments before the board or public hearings. At this time, why don't we go ahead and do the consent agenda in the administrative matters of Section 8. And Ms. Jones, if you would summarize those, that's 8.3, 8.4, and 8.5.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had three items that were reviewed and agreed to be placed on the consent agenda. The first was a request from Parks and Recreation for approval of Budget Amendment Number 38 to appropriate 21,000 of additional revenues from Parks and Recreation adult programs. There was a request from the Finance Department for approval of the fiscal year 2019 Juvenile Crime Prevention Council funding plan in the amount of $286,796. A request from EMS to apply for a grant from the Division of Mental Health Developmental Disabilities and Substance Abuse Services for $150,000 to aid in the prevention of opioid overdoses.
Is there any discussion of any of those items? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Commissioner Norman, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. We'll circle back to item 8.2. This is a request from the Finance Department to approve a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed $12 million general obligation Community College Bonds, Series 2018. Ms. Deb Alford will give us chapter and verse on this request.
Good evening, gentlemen. On November 4th, 2014, a referendum was passed by the vote of the majority of qualified voters of the county to authorize 12 million in community college bonds. Mitchell Community College is now prepared to construct a 40,000-square-foot allied health building on their statesful campus and is asking the Board of Commissioners to approve the resolution that will authorize the sale and issuance of these bonds. The bond sale is currently planned for May 30th of 2018.
Are there any questions from Ms. Alford? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make that motion to approve a resolution providing for the sale and issuance of not to exceed 12 million dollars in general obligation Community College Bonds, Series 2018.
Motion by Commissioner Norman, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say bids did go out for this project, and they are under the allocated amount.
Any further comments? And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Glad we're getting these out before the interest rates go up. Now move on to item 8.6, a request from administration to approve petition and application into the dry cleaning solvent cleanup program. And if you could summarize that, please, Ms. Jones.
Absolutely. Since we have found the presence of some chemical in the underground water at the library, we have found out that we are eligible for a program called the Dry Cleaning Solvent Cleanup Program. In order to officially become members of this program, I have included in your packet the agreement as well as the petition that needs to be approved by the board. And in this, what qualifies us to be eligible for this program is that because we own county property where at one point in time prior to county ownership, there was a dry cleaner located on that property. There were actually two located on what is now county property. So those two former dry cleaners and the fact that they were located on county property makes us eligible for the program. So there are actually two different petitions for those two different dry cleaners. One is the former Master Cleaners and one is Iredell Laundry, not Iredell County-owned or operated, but it was called Iredell Laundry. So those two are actually the ones that we are petitioning to be included in the program. In order to be part of the program, we have to fill out the petitions and we have to agree to abide by the program where the state will come in, they will do the necessary testing, they will go back and trace back to the actual source of the contamination. Then once they locate the source, then they will begin following that source to identify all areas around that source contamination that are contaminated. So they will be doing additional samplings at other properties in that area to identify how far the contamination goes. So they have already set up and scheduled some soil samples as well as additional indoor air samples at our library. So what we'll need to do, there are some benefits, of course, with this, but we will be responsible for 1.5% of the expense for the sampling and any necessary mitigation with a cap of 15,000. The state will cover the 98.5% of the expense. With the two applications that we have to send in for those two properties, there's a $1,000 application fee per application, so there'd be a $2,000 application fee. And part of the application is giving permission for the state and their necessary contractors to go in and do sampling and things of that nature, which requires board approval in order to do that, to give that right of access and free and clear, understanding it is a public building and a public facility and they need to coordinate, which they have agreed to do, but that will be something that needs to be approved by the board. Be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Since there are two subsequent cleaners and two subsequent issuances of petition, are we on for 15,000 max each or 15,000 total?
My understanding is, is 15 each.
Okay. Still not bad. Still not bad.
Still a whole lot better than what we were looking at in the...
Oh, unbelievable.
Correct.
Unbelievable.
You know, I think the general public could benefit from a little broader discussion about how we got here. And because it was only last meeting of the Board of Commissioners that we were advised that the levels were such that we needed to take some action.
Correct.
And so I know the public has been advised in, by a large ad in both the Stateful Record and Landmark and the Morrisville Tribune concerning what we knew at the time. And after having met with the library staff, issued that press release, and then subsequently the following week, on Tuesday, meeting with general public to answer any questions. Perhaps, Ms. Jones, you could summarize, just sort of put into context why we're doing what we're doing with this dry cleaning fund.
Absolutely. I'd be more than happy to. We were looking at purchasing some additional property in the Justice Quadrant in that area. In the performance of our due diligence, we found that there were some underground contamination. And it's a chemical called PCE, which is a chemical that's a known dry cleaning chemical. Several years ago, back in the 50s and 60s, people didn't realize how dangerous that chemical could be and the proper disposal of it, so the majority of the time, it was just dumped out the back door. That has resulted in some underground water contamination. We decided not to proceed with the purchase of that property, but looking at other properties in the area and under the advisement, when we asked our consultant, okay, if it's here, is there a possibility of it being anywhere else? They advised that we could possibly, if we were interested, we could test the library property, which we did, and we chose to do that. We did soil samples, and then we did additional indoor air samples and found that that chemical was present in the underground water at that property as well. The chemical forms a vapor, and that vapor can admit and come up and seep through the foundation. That's why we did indoor air samples. Those indoor air samples did show the presence of that vapor in our library facility. There are two different levels. There's a commercial level, which is 35, and there's a residential level, which is 8.3. The commercial level is predicated on adults being in that facility during normal work hours and things of that nature. Because that facility is visited by children as well, we chose to go with the residential standard. Residential standard does encompass children, however, that residential standard is predicated on 24 hours a day, seven days a week, over a lifetime. So we fall somewhere in the middle between the commercial standard and the residential standard. What we did, err on the side of caution, is we went ahead and closed off the bottom floor of the library. We did additional air samples on the main level, which we call the second floor, the main level. All of that was below the residential level, so those areas are safe. Erring on the side of caution, waiting for further guidance of what to do, we went ahead and closed off the bottom floor, relocated the children's area. In the meantime, we have changed our HVAC system to get more airflow in the building and things of that nature, relocated the children's area to the main level. And then we found out that we were eligible for the dry cleaner solvent cleanup program. We contacted the state, and the state said, yes, you are eligible for this program. We contacted them on Friday, and they showed up at our public information meeting on Tuesday that we had at the library to talk to the public and answer any questions. This is additional steps as far as officially joining and participating in that program. They are going to come in and perform some additional samples and some additional tests for us. They are saying that because we don't really fall under the residential level, that we have to enter our results into a risk assessment model to determine what that middle ground is between the residential level and the requirements for that and the commercial level. So those are the subsequent tests that they're going to be doing in the next week or so to try to determine what we need to do with anything regarding mitigation of this vapor. I will say this, the library staff have been amazing. We closed the library on Friday and Saturday, and in two days, they relocated the children's area. We opened back up on that Monday. They have been absolutely amazing to work with. They have rolled up their sleeves and helped do pretty much anything and everything to try to get things relocated. Our facility services staff has done an amazing job dropping everything and going out there and help doing things and help relocating things as well. So I can't say enough about our staff. They have done an amazing job. They have been really good to work with us. As you mentioned, we had an employee meeting, we had a meeting with our employees. Right after that, we issued the press release. This is something that we were not required to do additional testing. We could have stopped with our due diligence once we decided not to purchase property and stopped. Trying to do the right thing, we wanted to make sure that our facilities were safe as well, and I commend the board for making that decision and taking those additional steps and doing what we're doing now. That shows that you truly have the employees and the citizens foremost on your mind and in your hearts and trying to make sure that everybody is safe and you're doing the right thing and you're being as transparent as possible. So I cannot say enough positive things about all the steps that this board has taken and the cooperation we've had with the public, with the media. They've helped get the information out and get the message out, and with our staff.
Well, and it sounds, just moving the children's area sort of understates the amount of heavy lifting that went on, literally and figuratively, because they had thousands of books to move off of shelves and to re-catalog them. And the library staff, you know, we could have had movers come in and throw all those books in a box and haul them up there, but the library staff said, no, we don't want them to get out of order. So the Dewey Decimal System has been preserved, you know, it is now relocated to the main floor, and they are open full throttle for business and haven't missed a beat. And I want to thank the Downtown Stateful Development Corporation for making available their building on Center Street, which originally housed Dr. Hill's photographic collection of Stateful and Iredell County. And some of that is still used, but the building basically didn't have a tenant. And so our genealogical society and all their materials have been able to re-locate, and likewise, they have been open for business. So, and Mr. Haupt?
I just want to reiterate, you know, we've got a lot of phone calls on it, and I just wanted to reiterate to the public that, you know, through the due diligence, you know, we were never notified by the state of the properties surrounding there that they had identified and were put on the registry. And through the board's proactivity, you know, once we realized there was an issue, that we jumped right on it, we used the residential level. We've not stopped to do the right thing. We've always done the right thing. And, you know, one thing that I'm proud of through our checking with the state, you know, we're going to save a minimum, in my opinion, four to $500,000 easy with the state taking over 98.5% of this cost, and that come from us checking in and the manager calling to verify that, because we did have the properties on our site, and we'll have a cap of 15,000 per property. But I just wanted to, again, reassure the public that we've done what the due diligence we've done, the proactivity is on behalf of our employees and our end-users at the library. And I want to thank staff, our county attorney, and the library had had a lot of volunteers that have helped also. And I want to thank all those people for what they have done on behalf of the library. And most of all, I want to ask and thank the citizens of Stateful for their patience during this process. It's going to be a little bit of dust and things to deal with, but at the end of the day, they'll have a clean slate and a safe place to operate. So I just want to thank everybody involved.
And finally, a number of folks have inquired about, well, you know, we live near there, we work near there, we have businesses near there, what about, did this potentially impact us? This program is there for anyone, any property owner who has any kind of issues or thinks they may, you know, they'll come out and check. I have to tell you that this state organization was very responsive. And, you know, you have heard oftentimes a story of the two great lies, which when you have the government show up, it's sort of like, well, we're here to help you, and then our response is, and we're glad to see you. And in this case, it truly was. We were very glad to see them, and they're here to help us. So I want to thank our staff for being able to follow up and turn up the fact that we're eligible for this assistance.
Mr. Chairman, one thing I'd also like to add, I don't know if I heard or not, but we are going to check other surrounding county buildings ourselves and see where we're at there. We don't know how far stretching this is, but we all know sort of how the topography is of that land, and odds are, it's around. It's around. So we're going to...
We want to assure people that, you know, the levels are within generally acceptable ranges, but whatever it is, it can be mitigated, and we will take whatever steps are necessary to mitigate it in conjunction with the state.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make one final comment, if you don't mind. We had one question from the floor at our public input meeting, and I think it was a very valid question, and because I'm the only commissioner that was sitting on this bench when that library was built, I think it's appropriate that I address it. Basically, the question was, if this happened in the 50s and 60s and you built the library in 99 or 2000, why didn't you build it there on contaminated soil? That is a very valid question. And he said, why didn't you test? Well, we did test. We tested that site environmentally, and at the time, before 2000, it met all of the requirements. It was considered not contaminated and was considered okay to build on. And the reason I remember that is, we had chose a different site earlier, and that came back with contamination of petroleum. So when we planted that library back in the day it was built, there was a lot of environmental testing went on. In fact, this Dry Cleaning Solvent Act or whatever that was enacted, I don't think that happened until like 2004. The group from the state that have come in here to help figure it out and clean it up, they weren't even created until 2005 or something like that. So this is one of those things that we did practices years ago, and we thought would be okay, and we found out later, you shouldn't pour that stuff out on the ground. So basically, that's where we are there. We did the testing, but it just wasn't a very strict standard back in that day.
You don't know what you don't know. That's true. Okay, so is there a motion?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the petition and application into the Dry Cleaning Solvent Cleanup Program.
Motion by Commissioner Haupt, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Lord. We have no announcements of any vacancies to boards and commissions nor appointments to the same. We have no unfinished business. This is not a public comment period meeting, and we do have an item of new business from our general government task force.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to just update you guys. Two years ago, or a year and a half ago, in one of our planning retreats, we started a process to do some surveys throughout county departments to figure out ways to better serve the citizens through additional training, equipment, et cetera. And a brief overview, that is in process and ongoing, and so we are going to be looking at more definitive ways to hopefully set in triggers and identifiable points to make sure we're using feedback from the public and our employees and staff to make our departments more efficient, more productive, and better serve the taxpayers of Iowa County. So just want to update you guys, we are aggressively and proactively, Jeff and I are on the, I mean, the general government task force and working with Beth and Susan and Sandra and other staff and all department heads, and we're definitely taking into consideration all feedback and information and figure out ways to better serve the citizens.
Well, and, you know, we start with a workforce that is our fellow citizens, and it's really neighbors serving neighbors. And whatever we can do to give them more tools to be more effective and take advantage of their suggestions, then this is one of those ways we bring those up out of the trenches where the rubber meets the road and into the policymaking area.
And we hope that, you know, this will also get the employees to feel like that there's a buy-in, that we're all part of this, we've got to work together to make us the most efficient government we can. And that's not easy, because we all know government's not very efficient. So we're going to try to prove a point that's never been proved, it looks like. And we're going to keep working and changing the dynamic of the survey, of the questionnaire, of the evaluation, whatever it takes, to get the input that we want, you know, from our people to tell us what's going on, what we need to do, where we're doing good, where we're not.
Okay. Thank you all for your continuing service on the general government task force. And at this time, we'll move on to item 14, which is our county manager's report, which will be the highlight of our evening. And I know that Beth is going to be happy to move this off of her plate and at least put it on our plates.
She ain't had much else going on. Been kind of slow.
It has been a full plate. I will say that the budget team has done a wonderful job to get it to this point, and I would like to present to the Board of Commissioners as well as the citizens of Iredell County, the fiscal year 2018, 2019 budget message. There are some charts and graphs that I will be referring to in this message, and our assistant county manager, Susan Robertson, will flip through those for you, for your information. Each year in February, the Board of Commissioners hold a budget planning retreat where staff receives direction regarding priorities for the upcoming year. These priorities, along with the county's adopted strategic plan and departmental goals, became the framework for what is recommended in the 2019 fiscal year budget. The county's budget process begins in late December, early January, and includes the analysis of several factors. In order to estimate anticipated revenues as accurately as possible for the next fiscal year, we analyze building trends, population growth, state and federal policy decisions, unemployment rates, and personal income, just to name a few. New construction starts are a key indicator to the growing economic future and show builder confidence in the market. Permitted housing units are continuing to trend up as indicated in Figure 1. Most of that growth is seen in the southern portion of the county, but is beginning to move north as indicated in the next figure. Iredell County continues to grow at a relatively high rate. State projections for 2020 show Iredell County with an estimated population of 186,093 residents, which is a 16.7% increase in growth over a 10-year period of time. Our current 2018 estimated population of 179,740 makes us the 15th largest county in the state. More importantly, out of all 100 counties in the state of North Carolina, there are only 15 counties that have a lower 2017, 2018 tax rate. This is only possible through strong conservative fiscal management and diversification of our tax base through economic development. We continue to work hard to support our existing businesses and industry by fostering retention and expansion as well as encouraging new business and industry recruitment. With the partnership of our newly consolidated Economic Development Corporation, we strive to foster an environment that creates a premier community to live, work, and raise a family. In order to prove successful, we must remain focused on ensuring our commercial growth complements our community and offers a competitive wage to our residents. Our unemployment rate has continued to decrease since 2013 and was 4.2% as of February 2018, which is exhibited in Figure 3. This is below the state and national levels. This is a leading indicator that our economy is strong and stable and leads great confidence to our anticipated revenue projections. Taking all of these factors into consideration, ad valorem tax revenues are expected to increase by 2% based on anticipated new growth, and sales tax revenues are estimated to rise by approximately 4%. The 2019 fiscal year budget recommendation is predicated on an overall growth of a 2% or $3.6 million increase in revenues. I'm proposing an overall 4.91% increase over last year's budget. We made every effort to satisfy the priorities of the Board of Commissioners while working within the confines of our available revenues. To this point, there were over 12.5 million in recommended cuts made from the original requests received. The majority of these requests are needs but must be prioritized, delayed, and in some cases eliminated due to limits in revenues. Figure 4 shows the breakdown of... Figure 4 shows the breakdown of expenditures by category. These percentages are very similar to years past with the top three areas being in education, which is 47%, public safety, which is 21%, and human services, 15%. In education, funding for the three education systems comprised 47% of the proposed budget with an increase of 2.67% over fiscal year 18. In fiscal year 19, there is a total increase to public education of $2,482,999 as exhibited in Figure 5. This will increase the per pupil amount to $1,625, up from $1,593 in fiscal year 18 and will be uniformed between Aridale Statesville Schools and Mooresville Grade School District. Aridale Statesville Schools will see an increase of 2.67% or $963,330 in current expense and 20.97% or $1,770,587 in capital outlay. Based on our funding formula, debt will be reduced by 5.88%. Mooresville Grade School District will see an increase of 3.32% or $341,275 in current expense and an increase of 63.46% or $787,039 in capital outlay. Debt will be reduced by 4.63%, which directly correlates with the increase in capital outlay funding the schools will receive. Mitchell Community College will receive 2.56% or $86,321. More in current expense in the upcoming year while capital outlay will increase by 6.27% or $64,792. Debt will decrease by 3.7%. In public safety, the construction of the jail addition will be complete in early 2019. In order to adequately prepare for the increase in operational costs for the new facility, we began rolling excess funds at the end of each fiscal year generated in the sheriff's office and jail budgets into a jail operations fund. That fund currently has accumulated $3.6 million, which will be used to fund 28 new positions requested in the detention center. While excess funds will no longer be rolled into this fund once the jail addition comes online, we will continue to budget those funds each fiscal year to help minimize the operational expense impact over the next one to two years. In the 2019 fiscal year, we will begin to see a shift in our demographics of our population, which is exhibited in Figure 6. We will see our aging population begin to outpace our school age population, which will increase the demand for public safety agencies as a whole. For this reason, we need to strategically plan for the shift in demand. Citizen safety remains foremost on our minds and for this reason, the 2019 fiscal year budget includes an additional 17 new public safety positions, aside from the 28 new jail positions. These positions include seven in the sheriff's office ranging from road deputies to a drug detective, five in emergency communications, four full-time in EMS, and one in animal services. I have encouraged our departments to explore grant opportunities and partnerships with other agencies when possible to ensure we are being good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars and providing premier services as efficiently as possible. In human services, this year I'm recommending three new positions in the human service area to include a new veteran service position and two income maintenance caseworkers in social services. It is important to note that both positions in the social services department are 75% funded through the state. It is anticipated that the social services renovation at Government Center South will be complete in the 2019 fiscal year and will allow us to expand our services to the Mooresville area. In general governmental, as a service organization, our greatest asset is our employees. The board has taken great strides over the past several years to ensure that Aridale County is an employer of choice. We have and will continue to focus on our turnover reduction, which is currently trending at 3% from January to March 2018. This is a key factor in any successful and thriving organization because employee retention is more efficient than employee replacement. Staff retention is achieved through creating positive and safe working environments, engaging your staff and letting them know their voice is heard, showing appreciation and support, encouraging positive morale, and rewarding exemplary service. For these reasons, I am recommending to continue our newly established practices, including the performance-based merit increases up to 5% again this year. I am also recommending to extend the employee health clinic physical therapy hours from 16 to 25 hours per week. In addition, we will begin allowing dependents ages three and up, as well as retirees who are on our health plan to begin utilizing our health clinic. All of the health clinic additions are being covered through savings, realized the reduced stop-loss premiums, and claim reductions. Over the past few years, our focus was more on external service delivery departments, which was necessary in order to keep up with the growth of our county. As a result, we have increased the pressure on our internal service departments without additional assistance. I am recommending four new positions in general governmental departments, which include one new position in the tax assessor's office, as well as two new positions in our information technology department. I have also challenged our departments to explore cost savings that can be realized by bringing contracted services in-house where practical and consolidate efforts. Facility Services has done exactly that and I'm recommending one day porter to be housed at Government Center South. ICATS and Solid Waste will both add to their staff as well, although these are not funded from county dollars. In the building and land development area, we will continue to see growth. Over the past few years, we have made great efforts to accommodate the growth with additional staffing and streamline solutions where possible. This year, I'm recommending one new permitting specialist in central permitting, which serves as a single point of contact for most of our customers. This budget also reflects the utilization of collected technology funds as part of the permit fees to be reinvested in the purchase of new software to further automate the permitting and inspections process while improving our communication and online services to our development community. As the county grows and the demand for services shift, we must ensure we are maintaining our facilities and expanding where necessary. Within this budget, there is $440,886 proposed in facility improvements and $3,388,900 to fund a capital improvement plan. This number does not include the jail expansion or the public safety complex construction projects, which have their own project ordinances. We have funded projects for several existing facility renovations and repairs, which include Phase 2 repairs to the Government Center to complete necessary structural repairs and restore the historical character of the building. Several renovation projects are planned at Government Center South to better utilize space the county currently owns and expand our presence to the southern portion of our county. With a legislated change in the juvenile age, there is a need for additional space for juvenile probation. In order to accommodate that need, we are planning to relocate the sheriff's office, currently on the first floor of Government Center South, to newly renovated space on the second floor. Additional funding is budgeted to complete renovations of space at Government Center South for social services, as well as initiating the first phase of the Government Center South parking lot extension and repair. Funds are also allocated for necessary repairs at the fairgrounds, as well as for drainage and erosion control or flood measures needed at the vehicle services department. EMS has several 2012-2013 ambulances that cannot be remounted, as is our policy. This will be the final year for a relatively large expense as we complete the replacement of these ambulances. This does have a positive aspect in that these trucks will move into our spare fleet as it's running very low. This year is a relatively large vehicle replacement year and for that reason, I am recommending to finance all of our vehicle purchases over a five-year period. This will spread the cost and allow the opportunity to address as many needs as possible with limited resources. In an effort to begin planning ahead for future facility needs, there are also funds set aside for a Justice Quadrant master plan study. I am proposing to use some economic development funds to help add a part-time liaison position in the Economic Development Corporation to assist existing businesses, as well as smaller commercial entities, navigate the development process to ensure we are creating a positive environment that encourages development and entrepreneurship. We are also setting aside funds to implement a new workforce development tool to be utilized by the business community and school systems called the Edge Factor. This is a unique tool to assist in bridging the gap between the student, educational entity, and workforce in creative and relevant videos and stories. This budget message fulfills my obligation under North Carolina General Statute 159-11 to present the recommended fiscal year 2019 budget of $204,998,368, utilizing $1,250,000 for fund balance. This will maintain a tax rate of .52.75 per 100 valuation based on tax base of $23,124,640, with a collection rate of 98.85%. The fund balance on June 30, 2018 is estimated to be $37,888,582, which is 18.48% of the recommended budget. Respectfully submitted, Beth Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I know that you've been working, burning the midnight oil with staff and all the departments to nug out all these numbers and to wring out of the budget every savings possible. And we got a preview of this general budget and the likely, our priorities based on all the different asks, all of which are based on needs, but we have to make hard choices to maintain our fund balance, which we really want to maintain at 18%, which enables us to be able to borrow funds when we need to, just like this Mitchell College bond at very favorable rates by maintaining an extremely high rating by the bond issuer agencies. Are there any comments or questions at this point? You haven't passed us the big binders yet.
Deb Alford has them, our finance officer. She has them in a box sitting right beside her, so please be sure to get them before you leave.
Ms. Retha, can you resend us the dates for the upcoming budget sessions, please?
Maybe you can just share the timeline here for the adoption of the budget for people.
Do you know that schedule? We will have the first budget meeting on the 10th. It's that May the 10th and the next one on the 14th. And then we will go through those two workshops. Then we will, as proposed, to have our public hearing on June... Hold on, let me get my calendar.
Hold on a second.
Is it June 2nd?
Yeah.
June the 5th.
Yes.
Public hearing is tentatively scheduled for June the 5th. So we will be working diligently between now and then prior to having the public hearing.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Ms. Jones, for your very diligent and committed efforts on this massive project. It's the highlight of a county manager's year. Moving on, our closed session for attorney-client discussions did not result in any public actions that needed to be taken. And so the only thing that stands between us and the door is a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion is made. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who like aye, motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned.